All right, good evening, everybody. Seeing 6 o'clock. I'd like to open this meeting with a roll call.
John Bart.
Here.
Will Sankowitz.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Jen Blum.
Here.
Bob Clark.
Yep.
Carolina Hernandez.
Here.
Kristaline.
Here.
Courtney Brighton.
Here.
Additionally, I'd like to welcome Ms. Terri Fleming, Mr. Jack Higgins, joining us tonight. I see Lakeham present. Is anybody here recording the meeting? Hearing none? I'll invite you to join me in the presence of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And starting tonight, we have a candidate present for the position of interim superintendent of schools, a finalist. I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Barbara Starkey. Barbara, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Bar.
Thank you for coming. And you're welcome to begin an opening statement or presentation.
All right, great. Thank you so much. I knew I had to make an opening statement, so I went ahead and put together a small presentation to call your attention over to the screen and walk you through it. It usually answers that typical very first interview question. Tell us about yourself and why do you want this position? So I figured I would tackle that in a bit of a presentation. And Renee, I think you're clicking for it. Great, thank you very much. A little bit about my personal history. That's my mom. She's my inspiration. She's no longer with us physically, but she's with me every day in spirit. She was a first-generation American. She took -- she did not have the opportunity to go to school. You know, she had a public school education until high school, and then her parents would not allow her to go to college. So my mom raised three children. And while she was pregnant for me and 40 years old, she decided to go back to school and earn herself a bachelor's degree, two master's degree, and become a public school educator. And my mom was a perfectionist and dedicated her life, both to my family and to public education. For the longest time, I thought I was just going to be a Wareham Viking because that's where I spent all my time as a kid. And she was a teacher, school administrator, and someone I look up to very much. For me, I was raised in the city of New Bedford. I'm currently a resident of Free Haven with my wife. I have a blend of public and Catholic school background from my upbringing. I'm from a family of educators. Like I said, my mom was a teacher, my aunt was a teacher, my uncle was a teacher, my brother was a teacher, and I can keep going. What I like to do when I'm not teaching, because I like to believe that no matter where you are in the public school, you're a teacher somehow, is to spend time with my family, to read and to travel. My education, I got a Bachelor of Arts in Sciences from Salvador Gini University. After that, I got a job here at Aponequit. While working here, I went and got a master's degree from Bridgewater State College. And then on a foray away from here, when I worked for Stoughton Public Schools, I got my doctorate in education from Northeastern University. My very first job, though, wasn't here at Aponequit. My very first job was working at the I. H. Schwartz Children's Rehabilitation Center, which at the time was located in New Bedford, now over in Dartmouth. I started my career, believe it or not, with early intervention birth to three. So there I was, 22 years old, probably not likely to have children myself, but in charge of birth to three-year-olds. Really interesting experience. I did that for a year while working there. I also worked in the Chapter 766 program with children with significant needs. It was an out-of-district placement for New Bedford, Dartmouth, Free Haven. So I worked in those classrooms as well. What I really learned there was the important developmental milestones of children birth to three, the significant impact that parents in those early years certainly have on the lives of their children. And for me, that was paramount, because as I indicated to you before, it was not likely that I was going to have children myself. Learning that lesson in that job was really important to me because it began to shape my foundation of how I would work with children and the importance of partnering with parents to raise their children. Right along, thank you very much. From there, I wanted to be a high school English teacher in this place called Aponequit Regional High School. Posted an ad in the New Bedford Standard Times, back when it was a hearty newspaper, and it was a Sunday want ad. And I flipped it over, and there was an ad looking for an English teacher out here. Didn't even know where the school was. Typed my resume on a good old-fashioned typewriter on a paper with watermark and sent it out. There were 200 applicants for that job. I got an interview because I checked the box and said I would be the theater teacher. Didn't know much about it. I had been in a play or two. No lie, that's the truth. So they called me for an interview, a lady named Jane Ridington, who worked here in the office from the day after she graduated from high school until she retired. She called me for an interview. I had no idea how to get out here, but I sure found my way. Had an interview with a guy named Lloyd Dudley, who some of you might know, God rest his soul. And he and Jim Conroy, Jim Conroy, the principal at the time, gave me the job because I said I would, I'd take over the theater program. And that's what I did. For the next 17 years, I worked here at Aponequit as an English teacher, right down the hall in what was Room 111 at the time, now Room 113. Because while I was teaching here, we put a $15 million addition on the building while we were in it, which was quite a feat. But anyway, I taught English, everything from grade nine inclusion. I was one of the very first inclusion teachers to partner with a special education teacher here in the building in the very early '90s. I ran the theater program for years. I coached freshman field hockey. Didn't know a thing about that either, but we did all right. I was a class advisor and a mentor to new teachers as they came in. I developed my philosophy of teaching at that time, which was really centered around the idea that all students can learn. All students can learn, and you have to meet them where they are. It's all about building relationships with the kids. They don't have to like you every minute, but they sure have to respect you, and you have to respect them, too. And it was really about content knowledge versus skill acquisition at the time. And I think I was one of the teachers who was really starting to focus on skill acquisition, building pathways to student success, and again, building on that need to include parents in their students' education. While serving here at Aponequit, I had the opportunity to be the English department chair. Those are not positions that exist anymore, but they were here at the time. You were a part-time administrator, part-time teacher. So I taught three classes a day. In the other three periods, I oversaw the matters of the English department. During that period of time, I learned how to be the leader of a building-based team in a building. I was in charge of interviewing and mostly hiring the English teachers in the department. I supervised and evaluated those teachers. So I was into getting myself into the opportunity to be constructive, informing how people teach and work with students. I was in charge of departmental scheduling, departmental budgeting, grade-to-grade transition, subject-specific curriculum alignment, content programming, and building staff relationships. After serving in that position and here for 17 years, I took the advice of my colleague, Michael Ward, who was a math teacher and business manager here in the district, who looked at me and said, "If you want to be a leader in this school, you have to leave this school." I didn't like it when he said it, but I understood what he meant, and I did. And I took his advice, and I applied for a job over at the Robert G. O'Donnell Middle School in Stoughton, being a middle school teacher, middle school administrator, sorry, something I thought I would never do, because I birthed three and then the high school, and I thought, "Middle school? Why would I want to do that?" I applied for the job, and they gave it to me. And it was a great experience. I came to understand the importance of 6-8 education. I began to see what it was like to build an education from 6th grade to 12th grade and the importance of the vertical alignment of those two buildings. I became a member of a district leadership team focusing on school-to-school transition, so moving again from the middle school to the high school. I was in charge of interventions and enrichment programming for the building. I was also in charge of humanities curriculum for 6-8 and articulating that through to the high school. And I was in charge of forming community relationships and partnering with others. In full disclosure, I was part of the team that hired a person named Terri Fleming, who also worked at the Robert G. O'Donnell Middle School, a little-known fact. After serving there for three years and being away from here, there had been quite a bit of change in the district in a three-year period. There were more than 17 administrative changes in this district. The high school was in a little bit of a tailspin, to be honest with you. And they had been, I think it was two principals in a three-year period. There were several assistant principals in and out of that role down the hall. And to be honest, the students I cared for, the community I cared for, and the teachers I worked with, many of which I hired, wanted help, and I wanted to be that help. So I applied for the job. I made it to the finish line, and Dr. Jessica Heisinger, who was the interim superintendent at that time, awarded me the position, and I was grateful for it. For the next eight years, I served as Aponequit's very proud principal to this day, and still proud of the fact that I did that. And I just took a little bit of a walk down the hall because I haven't been in the building since I left it. And I have to tell you, I was feeling quite nostalgic. In that role, I was a member of the school and district leadership team, building district culture. I was in charge of safety and security here for the school, core values and beliefs in this building, and forming a plan for what would happen here at Aponequit in the days I served and in the days to come. Really proud of some of the programming, I think, that's still happening here, that I was instrumental in starting engineering programming, building up the fine arts programming in this building, and bringing in an online learning program that services a good number of students in this building who all bring different stories to the table but need to engage in their learning online. So those are three programs I'm really proud of, just to note a few. Big supporter of Aponequit Athletics. I wish Jimmy Cabusio was here tonight. I was also in charge of a good amount of the extracurricular programming here in the building. Again, being an ambassador for the school building community relations. Here, I got into school budgeting. I was in charge, again, of accreditation and accountability for this building. As a teacher here, I served on three NIASK evaluations of this building. Then as the principal, I prepared and got us ready to go through a NIASK evaluation that I didn't get to see through to the end, but I hear Mrs. Desert did a great job. I was in charge of staff professional development for the building, day-to-day management and operations. And something that we'd all kind of like to forget, leadership during COVID. And being the principal of a high school during COVID was certainly challenging, but I'm proud to say with the good help of my leadership team, Kalen Desert, Jack Higgins, and Andrew Davy, who's no longer here, working over at Free Haven, we were able to give the kids here at Aponequit, and I believe throughout the district, a really good education during a very challenging time, especially when you see what happened in some other districts. And then, after serving it for about eight years, I was looking for an opportunity to work in central office. It wasn't clear to me exactly when the opportunity was going to happen here in this district. And I wasn't exactly looking to leave, but I was looking to get that opportunity to have central office experience. Much of that with the goal of being a central office administrator here. Not sure that that was going to happen, so I applied outside. I applied to Bourne Public Schools. And again, I was very grateful for Dr. Carrie Quinlan-Joe, who gave me the opportunity to serve there. And I'm still serving there as assistant superintendent of teaching, learning, and everything else, because it's so much more than just teaching and learning in the role. So that's what we joke and call me, the teaching, learning, and everything else person. Here, I'm a member of the central office district administrative team, largely in charge of everything, from student safety, planning and day-to-day crisis management. I act as the superintendent every time Dr. Joe is not in the district or not available. I oversee curriculum from pre-K to 18-plus, acquisition of all of those resources, and communicating with the school committee curriculum subcommittee around any changes we're making to school curriculum. I'm in charge of grant acquisition and management for the entire district. I do district-level budgeting. I am the administrative and district person who hires all the other administrators in the district. And I'm happy to say, since I've been there, we've hired all but one administrator from the, I'm sorry, all but two administrators throughout the district who are new. And now I'm rolling through the names in my head, hoping the number two is correct. But we've hired a whole lot of administrators in our district, and I've been responsible for that, and I'm very proud of it. I've taken part in two contract negotiations for our teachers in the district of Bourne. I've served on the JLMC for the district. I'm in charge of professional development for the entire district. I am the EL director, Title I Director of 504 Coordinator and the Mentor Induction Program Director. I oversee all of the handbooks, updating policies and procedures for the district. I am also the district EL Title I Civil Rights Audits and Accountability Person. I engage in strategic planning and scheduling for the entire district. I oversee homeschool coordination. I run this, I designed and run the summer enrichment program for the district. I oversee summer school. I send weekly staff communication that people are sure going to miss if I leave to everybody in the district. And I'm sure I do a ton of other things, but the one thing not on that slide that I do is I spend time in a building every day, and I'm in the classrooms all the time. And it's probably my favorite part of the job because no matter how high you get, you can't forget that the kids are why you're here. And I sit here today looking at these bullet points, saying, "This is the next step in my professional career." Certainly love to have the opportunity to take that step back here in Freetown-Lakeville. These are just the bullet points of the job that dovetails with what I do now and certainly things that I am more than willing to do, learn to do, and am ready to do. And with that, I'll turn everything over to you because I'm sure you have questions for me. And thank you for listening during that presentation.
Thank you very much, Barbara.
Renee, if you wouldn't mind just leaving it up because I'm going to close with that. Thank you so much.
I'd love to go around the table and give the committee members an opportunity to ask you questions. Carolyn, you want to start off?
Jen, can I start?
Jen, you want to start off?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Barbara. Great to see you. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I'm sure you've been paying attention and considering the current climate of our district and also this committee. What are some of the qualities you feel you have to help us build back the trust of our communities?
Well, I think I'm a known entity here in the district. I think I have a proven track record. The times that I've worked here, I've been truthful, honest, sometimes a little too blunt with people, but I'm nothing but a dedicated servant for wherever I work. And I'd like to really do that time here in Freetown-Lakeville. I think I'm a strong relationship builder. I'm a good listener. I can't say that people like everything I say all the time when I say it, but I'm more than willing to listen. I think I can partner across the table, reach hands with almost anybody, and at some point, we're going to come to some kind of consensus and some kind of agreement. And just to turn it back a little bit, Jen, I have been watching, you know, the school committee and things that are happening in the community here, and it's heartbreaking to read. It's heartbreaking to watch. And I'd love to be a part of the solution because I think we can, I think we can do it. I think we can put our hands together, our heads together, and more importantly, our hearts together, and do what has to happen for the kids in Freetown and Lakeville, and that's to focus on what matters, them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If we can, if it's okay to go right down the line. Well, go ahead.
Good. Excuse me. There's a question I ask every superintendent since I've been here.
There's been a few.
You've probably heard it before.
Yeah. What do you think it means, "You don't know what you don't know"?
Oh, you don't know what you don't know. You're right. I mean, if I get this job tomorrow, I have no idea what's going to happen the very first day and what's going to present itself. How do you get ready for that? You bring who you are to the job. You know, for me, I bring my experience. And I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm not afraid to tell you when I don't know something, and I'm not afraid to go and learn it. So I don't know what I don't know, but I'm happy to find out.
Great. Go ahead, Will.
Dr. Starkey, welcome. Welcome back. Welcome home. You did leave off one bullet from your teaching experience. It was probably your greatest accomplishment was probably getting me to pass English in 10th grade. So congratulations there. So you've been away for the district for the past three years, right? Can you speak to a little bit how your experiences over the last three years have kind of put you in a position to come back and potentially leave?
Yeah, I think as a central office administrator, I've had the opportunity, in particular in this role, to look at everything, you know, from that kind of 10,000-foot view, right? My career has gone from, you know, literally holding small children to now kind of looking at everything from the bigger view. And I think having the opportunity to take a look at curriculum from pre-K to our 18-plus program and to work at putting in just-right programming for all of those grade levels and all of those content areas is really beneficial when walking into this role. I've had the opportunity to take part in budget planning for an entire district, also another important piece of what you do here as a superintendent. I think I've become a real ambassador for Bourne, and I'm happy to come back here and be an ambassador for Freetown and Lakeville. I think that's a big part of central office's role. You've got to be the face of the district, but you've got to be the heart and mind of the district as well. I hope that provides you with a bit of an answer. Well, I'm sure I could give you, I'm sure I could give you more, but I want to.
No, it does. Thank you. Thank you.
Barbara, you had mentioned in one of your slides earlier, you had a position where you were walking into a lot of administrative changes that were going on. And seeing a little bit of that in this district, you could potentially be walking into an environment where there's a lot of staff that are known to you that are now in different roles than in your previous experience. How do you see that as potentially being helpful or a challenge in the superintendent role?
Well, I think the relationships that you establish with people are always important. I'm not sure what you mean about somebody being in a, being exactly in a different role, but I think the relationship is what matters, right? I would be coming back in a new role, right? So I did walk back into the district once, coming to be the principal of a building in which, you know, I had been reared as a teacher and was best friends with half the staff. And I don't think that led to any kind of impediment in my leadership in the district whatsoever, if that's, if that's what you're.
It was.
If that's what you're talking about, yeah. You can have a good relationship with someone and still have a really difficult and challenging conversation with them. You know, I'm open to constructive criticism, and I would like to think that other folks are as well. I think there's a component of this job that involves coaching people, coaching people to either do better in their position or to exit their position. And I'm not concerned about my ability to do that, given my relationships with people in the district.
Thank you. Steve, go ahead.
Hi, Dr. Starkey.
Hi.
We had the pleasure of, my daughter was with you for a few years, so, but I think you left just before her senior year. But anyway, and I apologize if some of these questions overlap, but maybe if you could expand on leadership style. You mentioned that you got the advice and somebody suggested you leave, I think, when you went to Stoughton. I think as you try to advance your career to become a superintendent, you left and went to Bourne. How did that impact your leadership style or change your perspective being in a main office? Like, what could you bring? You know, there's some potentially difficult conversations on the horizon with difficult budget cycles, but being in the main office and perspective in your leadership style?
Well, again, I want to go, I want to go back to having that 10,000-foot view. You have to understand that every decision you make is going to impact every single child in the district and every family in the community. It's not just going to be a decision that, you know, impacts a certain group of people, and you have to keep that in mind. And that is a perspective I gained by going to Bourne and working in the central office. Like I said, I spent an awful lot of time in the buildings. And I know that any conversation we have at central office, any kind of meeting we have, any kind of decision we make, when we're thinking about the budget, when we're thinking about a strategic plan, when we're thinking about the potential of reorganizing a district, when, you know, if we think about here in Freetown-Lakeville, if we think about capital plans that might be coming down the line, if we think about making a decision like potentially closing a pool, right? I've heard those conversations coming up here. I know it's unpleasant, but it's one of the conversations that's going to have to happen, right? You have to think about everyone, and you have to think about what's best for all of the kids in the community at all times.
Thank you. No, it's the way your perspective changed. I was just curious on when you went to Bourne and.
Yeah, I think it's a broadening.
Right.
Right, it's a broadening. At the root of it is my care and concern for the education of the kids, but it's a broadening of the perspective.
Yeah.
You know, you're looking at everything now.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Dr. Starkey.
Hi.
Some of the most important decisions that a superintendent might make involve how to utilize limited financial resources. Can you tell us about your experience and vision for developing a budget, advocating for a budget with the towns, managing spending, and how you evaluate whether resources are effective in achieving goals?
Data's important, right? So anytime you're, well, I'm going to take the N first, right? Anytime you're thinking about resources and how to expend them and whether to keep something or let it go, you've got to look at the data. What's its use? What's its functionality? What's, what's its end game? What's its benefit to the kids, right? And how much do we need this to continue to foster the best academic, social, and civic program in here in the district, right? It's looking at data, surveying, gathering the information that's at your, you know, that's at your fingertips that can help you make a decision. It's consensus building around those decisions. It's not making those decisions in a bubble either. I don't see myself having any problem advocating for the budget. I did take a look at the budget that was presented at your last meeting. $49 million. It's quite a bit of money. It's a 5.5% increase over what you asked for last year. People don't take those numbers lightly whatsoever. And Freetown and Lakeville have a history of being fiscally conservative, right? The per people expenditure falls below the state, below the state number all the time. You know, do I think those things are, you know, acceptable or great? No, but are they real? They sure are. And it's, would be my job as the superintendent of the district to continue to be fiscally responsible by being aware that the money for these districts come from the taxpayers and that that money has to be spent, again, for the academic achievement, social, and civic advancement of the students in the district, weighing all those things together and advocating for what, what the community believes the district needs, right? To support the mission of the district. I have not been able to put my hands on a recent strategic plan, but I do, yeah, there is one. I'm happy to meet with the people on that strategic planning committee and see what was at the core of all of those decisions and how does the budget support that plan and to advocate for a budget that does support that plan. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you. Hi, Dr. Starkey.
Hi.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
My question is about your availability. When will you be available? The budget, we're due to vote on the budget the end of next month.
Okay.
Beginning of April. When will you be available?
So my contract has a 90-day clause. So if you were, if we were to, you know, I'd be lucky enough to be offered this position. I have a 90-day clause in my contract. However, I've had a conversation with my superintendent, who was at one time an assistant superintendent in a position very similar to this, exiting, potentially exiting a district at this time of year. And she has given me the grace to be able to leave within a more reasonable time period, perhaps 30 days, perhaps a little bit less. But I need to be able to have that conversation with her in a meaningful way if I'm offered the position. It's potential that I could start here as early as April 1st. I would hope that wouldn't be a barrier. I hope that wouldn't be a barrier, but I do understand the urgency for a need to have a single person in this, in this seat.
Would you be available for consultation on that budget? If we had budget meetings, would you make yourself available?
I would make myself available. Thank you.
Hello. I was happy to hear a lot of things that you say, so thank you. I have two questions I asked John, but I'm going to ask one. And then if we still have the time, I will ask another question. My first question is, what are your thoughts on sexually transitioned children to sex change?
I'm not.
What are your thoughts? Yeah. As a superintendent, how you will navigate that? And what are your thoughts on sexually transitioned children to sex change?
I got you. I can speak to, I can speak to the idea that I believe all students, all students deserve an appropriate, safe, public education. And as a superintendent of a school district, that's my responsibility to make sure that every child who walks through this door, no matter where they come from, no matter what their story is, no matter what their support is at home, how much they have, how much they don't have, it is my job to make sure they get a free and public education every day in a safe, responsible, respectful environment. That, that's where the plane lands on that for me. I am, I am not the judge of anyone else.
Yeah, but you will be the leader in the position that obviously will probably will have situation where you need to be involved. So that's why I'm asking you, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I will certainly.
Do you believe in parents' rights? Or do you believe, like, what are your thoughts on that?
I believe that parents, I believe that parents are the primary caregivers for their children. I sure do. Do I believe that transgender students have rights? I do. I do. And I will follow the Massachusetts state law as long as that is the law I'm required, that I, that I will follow. But I believe transgender students have rights. They do, just like every single student.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone, go around again if anybody has an additional question to ask?
No, thank you, Dr. Starkey.
No, but Carolina had a second question, and I would like to hear it, if that's okay, with the committee.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And how, how do you involve parents and the community members in the decision-making process?
Thank you very much for that question. I think parents should be involved in their children's education. As a teacher, I remember calling parents, holding meetings, sending out daily emails. I think this district has really advanced the way it communicates with parents. I see the weekly smores that are going out from all the principals with bulletins about everything that's happening in the building. I, I don't see any events happening here tonight, but I'm guessing there are events all across the district that parents are invited to come to. I think one thing I'd like to do as a superintendent would mirror something I did when I came back to the district as a principal. I held some coffees with the principal, happy to hold some coffees with the superintendent to get, to get to learn about some of the community members who are new, who I don't know, to reintroduce myself to the people I do know, and to help to, to get more parents involved in decision-making around their students. I think parents also serve on school councils in each of the buildings. I'm sure there are parents on the strategic planning committee, understanding there's a capital planning committee. I'm guessing there are parents on that. I welcome parent involvement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Anybody? Barbara.
Yeah, I would ask one after I've done my standard question. Can you, you relate to us in one of the more, one of the more difficult problems you've had in Bourne and how you resolve that problem?
Difficult problem. You know, we're facing, we're facing an issue right now in Bourne. I talk about that. We're, we're facing an enrollment issue, and it's becoming a very public issue for the communities because they're, they're at a crossroads with what to do. Their enrollment is really dwindling, and we have made a real PR campaign around the district. We're in the middle of developing a strategic plan for the district to try to address enrollment, but we're looking at a potential for a restructure of the schools, and that's, that's a challenge, not the physical challenge of the restructure, right? It's the, it's the financial, the emotional, the community challenge of thinking about restructuring a school district and changing where your children, where your children are educated. So that is one thing we're facing. Is that sufficient, or would you like some other?
Having been in a similar position, I know that sometimes that position is really a dumping ground, but a lot of problems get dumped in your lap. Sometimes I'm probably higher up, so I'm sure you're multitasking on a daily basis to try and deal with those, with those problems.
I want to thank you for acknowledging that, Bob. That's the everything else. I still, you know, when the, when the parent isn't happy with what the principal says, I get the call next.
Sometimes they skip over the principal, don't they?
Sometimes they do, but I'm happy to send them right back for that first round, to be honest, because you should really talk to the principal and before that, have a conversation with the teacher, and then I'm happy to try to mediate when things at those levels don't go well. I do the substitute hiring for the district as well, and, and that sometimes leads to some additional, some additional challenges in, in the role that I'm in now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have an additional question?
I'm just...
Chris, go ahead.
Excuse me. In the last year or so, we've had a problem with race in this district. How, I know, I kind of feel like I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sorry, but how...
I'm here.
Would you deal with that?
I'm, I'm going to go back to part of the answer I gave Carolina, and I say it with my whole heart. All students deserve an opportunity here. It is, one of the strongest ways to change hearts and minds is through your own behavior, and what you're modeling for the kids and how you want them to treat one another and how you want people in the community to treat one another has to start with you, and I am more than capable of modeling inclusion and acceptance.
How? Would you be willing to introduce some type of programs?
If that, if that is a... If that is, if that is a need, I don't, what I don't want to do is impose something I think is going to work in a community that I've been away from for three years. I'd like to sit down with people who are having the issue. I'd like to sit down with a group of people, and let's, let's figure out what the real problem is, and then let's find a way to solve it together. It could be bringing in a program. It could be bringing in guest speakers. It could be a myriad of other, of other choices we have, but I don't want to pick a choice sitting here at this table without really understanding a problem.
Fair enough.
But I thank you for the question.
Thank you.
So you're hearing no other questions at the table. I'd invite you to make a closing remark if you do, Barbara.
Will do, thank you. Thank you, Terry. Why me? Why me? I think, I, you know, I know I have an established relationship here in the district. I have knowledge of the communities, and I think I can pretty expeditiously start to address what you have alluded to in your questions tonight, what you've been honest in sharing about, some of the concerns you have for the district, some of the discord that's been happening here, some of the discord that's been happening between constituents out in the community and this committee, and I think I have the, the ability to work and bring people together. I've done it in every position that I've had. I can't see why I wouldn't be able to do it here, so I'd ask you to give me that opportunity. I'm going to click one more time. I'm just, I, I find that I'm uniquely situated to employ my previous experience here in the district and my experiences here in Bourne, you know, to shift our attention back to this well-known, really respected, high-achieving district. That's a picture of the class of 2017 graduation. It's one of my favorite pictures, where it rained on that crowd for an hour while they waited for graduation, and then we get a double rainbow, and I would love to come back and, and have the opportunity to bring the feeling those people had that day into this room every month when we meet, and I think I can do that. And my last slide there, just, it's a quote, and it just speaks to the urgency. You're never going to find the perfect, right? You're never going to find the perfect candidate for any position, but I think I'm the best fit you have for Free Town, Lakeville at this time, that's for sure. And I'm asking, I applied because I want to be back here. It's posted as an interim position. I don't have an intention of being an interim in this district. I'd like to come back to this district for, for a significant period. I've got three to five years left before I can retire. I'm happy to work right up and beyond my retirement, so I'm looking for you, if you'd be kind enough to give me this position, to serve as a long-term interim with an opportunity to roll that based on performance into the permanent position. And the reason I'm asking you for that is because you want me to be invested, and I am also not in a position to walk out on three years of a contract in Bourne to come here for something for two or three months, and although I would, I'd love to be here, I can't just be here for two to three months. I'd like to come here and do the work, because that's what I do when I go someplace. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight. Thank you for having me, and I wish you the best in your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Starkey.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
We got it.
You guys ready? Do you want to move? I told Barbara that was the longest I've ever sat out here when I'm eating was on, I couldn't talk, so that was...
Please.
Do you want me to?
Please.
Yeah, yeah.
Have a seat.
All good.
Please, take your time, take your time, get settled.
I call this the hot seat, but that's the hot seat. I've sat in this eight years, I know this is the hot seat.
How are you, Rick?
Good, well, nice to see everybody. Nice to see you. And my back to some of my, some of my other friends and pals. Barbara just said it was kind of awkward, and I said, "Not really," as we were kind of passing past in the hallway there, so certainly not from my perspective. So I think that's it. I don't have, I, I did catch a glimpse of it. I didn't stick around. I actually would rather be down the hall, no offense, and watch some of the playoff basketball games, so would some of you guys probably, but I do want to say before I have an opportunity that, oh, yeah, no, this isn't really my kind of comments. Anyways, only that, I, I'm glad the screen went back up. You guys would be here for a real long time if I did an 18-year superintendent PowerPoint presentation, I just, I may add, so, but I'll turn it to Mr. Burke. How do, how do you want me to proceed?
Yeah, I'll wait till everybody comes.
Thank you.
Sure.
No Jose?
Board of Selectmen meeting.
Oh, he is back.
Kept me in check these past three years. Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Burke.
Nope.
All right. I want to welcome you back.
Thank you.
To the Ponacott High School.
Thanks for having me.
For the crowd, we have Mr. Richard Madeiras here as a second candidate for the position of interim superintendent of schools. You are welcome to start with a...
I'll try to keep, I'll try to keep my opening brief, because I'm guessing some of the other things I'll say are probably going to come up through the course of your questions, and I know you, I know kind of the system and setup, so, first of all, ladies and gentlemen, just thanks for the opportunity to, to really come before you and present my case to be appointed as the interim superintendent. I want to make sure, though, in my initial comments, we remind the community and certainly the board, I think it was a great move by posting for interim. The term interim really is an up to a six-month position. It's a transitional format. There are basically two pools of candidates you typically get when you're looking for an interim superintendent. You get retired, experienced superintendents from outside the district who apply, who basically keep the seat warm, take about three to six months to kind of get acclimated in the community, and I don't think you can afford that option. The second option that typically happens for candidates looking at interim positions is a person who has no superintendent experience, right? They have no superintendent experience, and they basically are using it as a stepping stone on the job training. They are going to try to explore and extend the security of the contract, go beyond six months. Why? So they can buy more time, so they can understand what the job's all about, and at the same time, commit you and cut a deal. That's, those are the basically two pools of candidates for interim superintendents throughout the Commonwealth. I, I think I offer this district a unique circumstance, having sat in that seat. I still point to the seat. I think the superintendent still sits there, based on my Lake Camp piece, for eight years having been a superintendent. I think I am a blend. I think I am the ideal transitional candidate. If you base it, if you base your decision tonight on qualifications and experience, this isn't even close. It's not even close for superintendent, interim superintendent, and I'm here tonight certainly to answer all your questions. I guess, I, I'm guessing there's some Patriots fans here, and my analogy to the Patriots fans would be the following. Patriots organization, ask Robert Kraft, ask the Patriots organization right now whether they think it was a good idea to hire a high-quality, competent assistant with no head coaching experience. We know the answer. They fired that individual, and what did they do? I'm a Giants fan, by the way, so I'm a little biased here, but what did they do? They then brought in an experienced head coach who's familiar with the organization to lead them, and that's where they're at right now. I think it's very analogous to what's happening here. It's not a criticism. It's the reality of the choice that you have before you tonight as a board, and I respect that. Both Mr. Burke and Mr. Sankwich, no, I have not reached out to any administrators within the district very easily. I have not reached out to any of the board members here, not one, with the exception of the chair and vice chair, 44 days ago on a Saturday, and Mr. Burke and Mr. Sankwich can attest to this. I texted both the chair and vice chair and offered my guidance, support, and leadership in any way possible as the interim or whatever it may be consultant, and I still put that out there, in any role possible, to get the district back to where it needs to be. You have some serious issues here, and I have to acknowledge both Mr. Burke and Mr. Sankwich that morning, probably shared this with the board, but acknowledged receipt of the text. It wasn't a phone conversation, it was a text, offering that. Both of them acknowledged that. Now, that was before you ultimately met, just to be clear, so the community hears that. That was before, I think, you were meeting that following Monday and made a determination to then post an interim position. At that point, that's what brings me here. Letter of interest, resume, anything that I can answer for you tonight, and I have since followed the process and protocol. There are no deals being made by this retired superintendent of schools. I've been here for eight years. I think I, I think my record here in the district and beyond speaks for itself, but I do think it's important, and why I'm here tonight is not with an understanding that this should be your decision based on what I've just shared with you, but the reality of what you need right now. Some real close folks to you folks shared with me when I expressed interest in this, and some personal individuals said, "You've got to be crazy based on everything you've seen happening in the last couple of years. You're pretty happy right now. Things are going well personally and professionally. Why would you do that?" Thanks to Jose and Lake Camp, I've been able to stay pretty connected watching the meetings. I'm going to disagree with those individuals, though, and I told them this both personally and professionally. Not a lot has changed in these two towns, and not a lot has changed with the board. People have a short memory if you think the board that I dealt with was not made up of high-profile, diverse opinions, strong-willed individuals, and in some cases, some characters, right? So I mean, that, that's not different. The one difference from three years ago is you did not have, and it's not a criticism, but it's a fact, you didn't have an experienced leader to keep you focused, keep you on task, do what was best for kids, do it in a professional manner, not let it be personal, keep it professional, because some of you folks obviously were part of the process to try to keep me here eight years ago. I'd be starting my 11th year if you had your wishes back then, those folks that did that, right? If it wasn't for some, some personal decisions that were made financially. So I, I get it. Again, I, all of that, what I just said, first, Mr. Burke, thank you. I know it's probably about three minutes more.
No, no.
But I didn't do a PowerPoint, so I'm trying to use up some of that time a little bit. I, I just wanted to point out, it's important, folks, if you truly want an interim and you want to make a transition to finish this school year, four years successfully, and then build for the next school year, that's what, that's what an interim is going to do for you, and you have some legal issues, financial issues. I think you have some significant financial issues in relation to what the towns can afford and the budget as I seen presented. I know we're early on in that process, but every day that goes by, I'm telling you, not because I've had conversations with the individuals, but I'm telling you, you're putting undue and unnecessary stress on everybody at central office and in the buildings as it relates. So as this process, which I completely respect and support your decision to do an interim, it's why I'm here tonight, and I thank you for the opportunity to do that. Some of the other pieces, which I got to be a little more detailed, I'm guessing you had to tweak some of your questions from me in comparison to the other candidate just because of the differences in our backgrounds, but maybe not, but I, but I'll speak to some of the retirement pieces that may come up, my long-term commitment, some of the things I think that are important to you folks so that there's continuity, consistency, and stability throughout. I can tell you, I bring to town officials in both Free Town and Lakeville instant credibility in relation to what we need to get done here, and I say wait. My wife still can't believe that I can sit on the couch two and a half years later with an earpiece. Happily married for 34 years, so you notice I have the earpiece. She's not listening to you, folks, don't be insulted, but she's reading, watching TV, and I'm watching, I'm watching the school committee meeting in relation to that. One earpiece in. If it's a good basketball game, I see Bob kind of smirk, and I might still kind of tune into the game PC's playing or something he's did, but, but I'm generally trying to, trying to be light with it, but be serious to the fact that I'm still very much, I'm here tonight because I'm engaged and believe that you can't afford to wait. If you're focusing on three to six years and you don't get it right in the next three to six months, you're in trouble. You're going to be in trouble in three and six years, so I hope I'm here tonight to give you as much information to make an informed decision. Mr. Burke, thank you. If you guys had that three-minute timer for public participation, I would have long gone over, but I know there are rules a little different here tonight, so... Mr. Burke, thank you. If you guys had that three-minute timer for public participation, I would have long gone over, but I know there are rules a little different here tonight, so. So thank you.
All right, Rick, thank you. I'd love to allow the committee members to ask questions.
Absolutely.
Jen, you give us that.
Thank you, Mr. Madeiras.
Thanks.
Per John's orders, we are asking all the same questions.
Okay, all right. But if you need to tweak them a little bit to get information from me, somehow you guys know I'm going to probably get it out to you anyways, but.
Yeah, we're asking the same questions.
Please do. I, I get that. I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that to be, that it wasn't going to be objective. I just didn't know if there had to be things that you wanted to make you hear from me that you might not necessarily need to hear from Dr. Stocky. That's all. Sorry.
That's all right. I just wanted to clear that up. Obviously, you have been watching, as you said, and considering the current climate of our district and also this committee. What are some of the qualities you feel that are going to help bring trust back to our communities?
So it's credibility, it's transparency, and I don't, I, listen, I, I don't want to give all my advice away because if you want to sign me up and do that, there's an appointment letter. I'll do that and I'll give you, I go step by step what needs to be done. I do that with, for the next person that came on board, too, if that's something you guys want to pursue. But, but I also know I need to answer the question tonight so you feel comfortable and so the community feels comfortable. I'm the one who's, I was advocating for this to be a public meeting, by the way, and an open meeting. I think it was a great move, right? Full transparency. No matter what you did, someone was going to question this was, there was a backdoor deal in relation to that.
No doubt.
Pretty apparent that that's not the case tonight, right? I mean, based on, you know, kind of where we're at in relation. But I think it's important that you are professional, that you are ethical, that you are moral, that you are, that you are speaking to everybody. And I mean everybody. I referenced that old board. Some of you are on that board. I'm not going to list the individuals, but there was a diverse group. So you might argue with me, maybe not argue with me, you might debate with me on the fact that the composition of this committee is different. I would respectfully say that we went through a pandemic with some of my board members who wanted to get us back to school faster, some who didn't want to come back to school. I had a principal didn't want to come back to school, by the way, during this crisis. So I think I have the people skills. I think I have the willingness to sit down. The first, you know, in addition to the leadership team, central office and dealing with that, the community, as I see people getting up. And I know you're public, so I'm going to give a little bit of my, my two cents for, in relation to your public participation, for example. People leave and don't feel that they've been heard. Now, I know you followed legal. I understand that the process is you don't respond to that, but you need to task that to the superintendent. And that's when an experienced leader comes in and says, "Mrs. Jones," or whoever it may be, "I'm going to get back to you in relation to that." And I don't think that, again, I don't see behind the scenes, obviously, as a public person now, right? I don't see what happens in executive session or outside of that. But I get the sense that the communities, and I'll use the financial piece as an example, don't feel confident that they're getting all of the information. I'm not suggesting I think that's the case. I'm just saying to your question, Jen, I believe you need an experienced leader. You can't afford someone who's coming in there and showing you all the different things that I would do if I was superintendent. I did it for 18 years, eight years successfully, not in the easiest of times, the last two during a pandemic. Some of the people who sat in the audience, by the way, and were pushing for me to get the kids fast, faster, I have to acknowledge, were probably right in relation. We did it safely. We got back our kids faster than almost every community, right? We did it, we had a five-day-on, five-day-off, not well-received initially, but it was the idea to get kids back into school safely. I just want, I make that note about kind of acknowledging that maybe they were right and I was wrong. I think that's a flaw sometimes we have. People aren't standing up and being held accountable. And so you'll get that from me. This board is going to be faced with a lot of issues in relation to the budget, legal issues, and so forth. I'll own that as an experienced leader, and I think that's what I bring and can provide and offer. Hope I answered that question.
You did. Thank you, Rick. Bob, go ahead.
I'm going to, I'm not going to ask you the same question because I asked you years ago when we hired, when you hired.
I must have answered halfway decent, Bob. I did make it there, but go ahead.
Yeah. I'm curious, in your resume here, you've been a substitute teaching?
Yeah.
And I'm curious why you're doing that.
So, so thanks for asking me. And I know that wasn't a question you asked the last candidate because it's just the reality of the resume. So first year, I'll, I'll be quick. Two and a half years, right, since I retired, right? Again, decision you folks tried to keep. We worked through better circumstances today for me to come back. And I'll, I'll speak a little bit of, maybe through one question or not in response. But so what I did is the first year, I did some part-time consulting, classic mentoring and things that superintendents do. Second year, I said, "I miss the kids." So I went down the street to Hurley Middle School and CCON, stayed up in Dyden Rehoboth, right, where I live in the community, and said, "Hey, can you use a sub?" And I did it for a year. I had a blast. I've passed this around because I would like you to read it. Kind of was a little prepared. Didn't choreograph this. This is the yearbook that the school dedicated to me as a substitute teacher. Sub, daily sub. I came home on the, in June, right, right before the eighth-grade award assembly, and I thought to myself, "Am I really making a difference?" Right? I was making decisions. I was the superintendent of schools, and we were making policy decisions. Wasn't making a difference. I'm going to share this with you if you don't mind. I have enough copies. Kind of was a little prepared. No PowerPoint, but it's a little prepared. So year two, substitute, daily sub. The staff, the administration, I became, because of my experience, 35 years in, a mentor, built a relationship with the kids in the classroom, but also students and staff. And I'll let you just read it. Yearbook was dedicated. They invited me to the eighth-grade night, and I got to be honest with you. I'm thinking, because I've only been to like 100 eighth-grade nights, I'm a daily sub. He said, "You got to come, Rick. You got to show up," because I received an award and plaque. So that was year two. Roll into year three, continued. I liked the practice, right? I didn't go out into Rhode Island looking for a three-year contract in superintendent. And one of the reasons I didn't, because I wasn't sure that I would stay in Smithfield, for example. And I didn't want to sell something that wasn't truthful. So that's just a page from the yearbook. So you may read it. Just, I just, I think it captures kind of my enthusiasm, my professionalism, and my belief. I didn't know that I was giving it to the directors, to Mr. Higgins and Ms. Fleming. But I do have others coming around. I have one more here, too. So, so that's what I've been doing to start this year. The other day, and I literally mean the other day, about three weeks ago, I got a call from the superintendent in Westport, Tom Orban. Some of you may know Tom, right? He's a Dyden, great guy. Mike Grandfield, a teacher I hired, was going out and leave, and they said, "How would you like to be a building administrator in Westport?" One day, they sent me an appointment letter. One day. That's all it took. Appointment letter per diem. By the way, I might suggest, not a bad strategy considering your financial circumstances right now. Hire an interim superintendent, pay them on days they work, don't pay them on days they don't work, short term. You could do the math. It's a much better scenario. Mrs. Madeiras would be not too happy with my negotiating strategy in relation to that because a contract would make more sense, a larger contract. But in your circumstances, finishing one year and doing another may be something you consider for an interim position. So Bob, long-winded, you know I'm long-winded with that. My last three to four weeks, I committed because Mike Grandfield, who was a former teacher, I don't know how many, you know Mike? He was at Aswanson Elementary. He asked me, he said, "I'm coming back. I promise. It's my second kid. Can you help us out?" I've had a blast over there, middle school, high school, hadn't been to Westport. The one thing I will say in addition to being around kids and having a blast is it gave me a little perspective on some other communities and what they're doing, which was neat to see. Being here eight years, being in Somerset 20 years previous, it was helpful having some insight into what's happening. So I'm there right now, day to day. They also know I'm here tonight, and they certainly know where my priorities are. So in relation to maybe a question that might kind of come up, I was accessible, and both Mr. Sankwich and Mr. Burke know this, January 10th. It's February 24th. The clock's ticking on folks that are sitting, some folks that are sitting here. There's a lot of pressure on them to get this done. I'm not suggesting that, suggesting you have to rush to this decision, but as each day goes by, I think it raises a level of anxiety that's not needed. So that's what I, that's what I've been doing. I'm, I'm still, I've made an obligation. Mike's coming back. They just, he actually had the baby last night. His wife had the baby last night. And so it was like a two- to three-week piece. I went over to help him out. I actually have my name tag in here. They printed that. I mean, it was like pretty, I show up the next day, and they had building administrator, name, face, bang. We were there. I wanted to say Freetown Lakeville, but I didn't say that to Tom when I got there. He's retiring, by the way, in June as well. So they're going to be looking for a superintendent there. A conversation that one school committee member said the other day when I was in the, in the hallway, having been there four days. I'm not, I think those of you that worked with me for eight years know, I'm usually not here with an ego saying, "This is what I'm, how talented I am, what I can do." But in the same token, for some folks who haven't met me or know, I do want to present the fact that at this point, in what I believe are multiple crisis issues going for this board and this district, you need experience and you need someone who's, who can walk in. The only difference from me not walking into work tomorrow here, all the way down the hall, is they've taken away the passcode, and I'd have to have Renee buzz me in. I think she would let me in. I think. I think she would let me in. But, and again, I'm trying to be a little tongue-in-cheek, but serious about it. Who else could do that? In five days, in 10 days, maybe even 30 days? This school year can't be lost. It's an interim position. I get it. It would be much easier and simple if you could bring someone in today and say, "This person's going to stay with us for the next five years and lead us to future success." And I can tell you, I'm 60, by the way, younger than my predecessor here, right, 60. I could do that. I could do that. But that shouldn't be how, what you based your decision on this week as it relates to the interim. You have too much at stake in the coming days and months to worry about that. Ultimately, you can negotiate that and work that out with whomever that individual is. And I'll support and walk away, folks. Just so you know, at the end of the day, I still, I still wear to Westport and CCON that some of them think it's Arizona, but it's okay, Jimmy Cabusio's vest with the A on it. I let them think, I let them think of Arizona because the ones who really know don't like the fact that I'm showing up there rolling in with an Ponakewatt vest on. I should know Mr. Clark likes briefer answers than that, for sure. But I, but I thought it was, I do think it's important that you realize that I've been active during that timeframe, and you're not bringing someone in. By the way.
I have a follow-up, but I'll let you go on.
And, and I may add, you've had some success with bringing a former superintendent into this district with Steve Fratton. And it worked, from my perspective, pretty well.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Madeiras walking home. As always, Mr. Clark stole, stole my thunder with my question, but you've, you've been away from the district now for, for two and a half years, right? My question for you is, what have you been up to? And you've shared a little bit of that. But outside of Mrs. Madeiras kicking you back out of the house, what, how do you feel like your experiences, and maybe your experiences in Westport, getting a different perspective, will help coming back to Freetown Lakeville?
So, so I will say, and I say it to the committee members all the time. Boy, is it easy sitting, watching the TV, folks, and commenting and being critical and thinking, "Oh, no, I would have done that." Because you're not in that hot seat there. I will say that I feel that there's been a loss of student-centered peace perception that needs to get brought back. And by being a day-to-day sub, I will say this. I think I pride myself. Mike Grandfield said, "You still had those tickets where you used to cover classes as kind of a gimmick first day." And so when we were talking the other day, one thing that helped me, Will, to your point about being in the trenches, I have a greater respect for, we do it all the time. You guys do it weekly in your message. I get that, right? We talk about how, how paraprofessionals are so important. Boy, you don't even know how important they are until you're in the classroom and you're a substitute working with them. How about custodians? I, I know we say that. I said it. I just, having a different perspective, being in there, working with students. Funny story, last, the week before vacation, the commissioner of education came to the Westport Middle School, High School, right? So they'd hired me as a building administrator like three days before. I think that was part of Tom's orchestration to kind of help him out with the whole process. Commissioner comes down, I've known the commissioner. I stayed clear. I said, "I'll help you guys out, clear the hallways up." And a few of the kids come up. Now, I only been there a couple of days and say to me, "Mr. Madeiras, we thought you were the commissioner." And I'd been there like three days, and I'm like, "What made you think that?" They're like, "Well, you, I, you know, guess if you dressed the part, it kind of looked like that." But it, but it just being, Will, to your question about what did I get from going to CCON, in addition to just the, the passion, I do think it kind of recharged me, right? The last couple of years of the superintendency here, year seven and eight, we were coming off the pandemic. We were finally starting getting some normalcy back. We had gone from the transition. It was exhausting. It was exhausting. I didn't think at that point I would be as enthusiastic as I am. If you asked in truth, I don't, I think this is being taped, so it's not live, Mrs. Madeiras about this decision tonight, you might get a little different opinion. What family member doesn't see, whether it be their spouse or their kids, and think to themselves, "You want to get beat up? You want to go through that?" I don't see that. That's not happening. If I'm the interim superintendent, that's not happening. I'm telling you, it's not happening. For you folks individually, you folks collectively, and for this community. It didn't happen in eight years than when I was here. That has not changed, my passion, my emotion. But it has to be a collective piece. I, I've already given some thought, as I'm sure any candidate would. How do I get ahold of the central office directors, meet with them and do that, right? Because you have some talented people, building principals. That's, that's okay. I want to meet individually with each of the school committee members, several members I don't meet individually. It can be a phone call. Assume I'd rather do it in person, and I'd do that this Saturday. I'd set up a time. Each of you guys come in, let's talk, because I do need to hear from your own perspective what I can do to help you in that process. Because it, because it has been painful at times watching some of you go through what you've gone through. Nobody, nobody, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, anybody, but nobody deserves the treatment that almost everybody in this room has, has experienced recently. That's not happening in my tenure, whether it be as interim or as long-term. So I, to, to Will, to answer your question, I, I felt by getting back into the schools and being able to interact with administrative assistants and things, things I prided myself on doing because you folks know I was a pretty visible superintendent, you're really doing that as a sub, right? They're asking you to cover classes. I mean, they're a sub. But they dedicated the yearbook to me, so I'd like, at the end of the day, my wife said to me, I literally came home. She said, "You going to the award ceremony?" I said, "Yeah, listen to this one, huh? Like, you're going to like this. They dedicated the yearbook, had an award, and I wasn't going to show up to the night." But it, but, but in those small sentences, it wasn't the yearbook piece, right? Of all the awards that I received as superintendent and as principal for 10 years, that meant a lot to me because as you read that, it said staff. So people were coming up to me, and I was real careful because you guys have been there in other districts. I was real careful about being critical of telling people how to do that. I'm already hearing that at Westport. "Hey, can you, you got any suggestions?" And I'm real careful because don't we all hate people that come in as know-it-alls and consultants and say, "I'm going to, listen, why are you doing that?" I didn't as a sub. I didn't go to the teachers' room once, and yet I had a great relationship with the teachers. We were, they were going through some tough negotiations. I know something you guys don't have any experience with right here. I'm being a little sarcastic. But it, but it was, it was a helpful experience looking at it from a, through a different lens, not being the person in charge of the school district. Because I think I thought here and in Somerset, I had that, but at the end of the day, you're still talking to the superintendent, right? It was different, I think, when they were able to approach me in the role that I took and will continue to take. At the end of the day, I got a good deal here, folks. I will get in my car, go back to Rehoboth. I just came from DC visiting my son who works for the Pentagon right now. Went to the PC Georgetown game this past weekend, past week. Wasn't a real good PC game through a basketball fair. But I, I'm in a good place. My son's an ABC Six reporter. Probably don't watch Channel Six. Everybody watches 10 and 12. Ryan Madeiras, if you get a chance, I'm doing a little promo here, right? So I can also keep the media off because he already thought during some of the instances, "Is there any information? That sounds like a good story." I'm like, "Hey, stay away from Freetown Lakeville. I'll give you a good story. You don't come back down." back down. But he's still living at home, so he's got the life Riley right now with a job and doing that. So, again, Mr. Sanquist, I hope I kind of at least responded to what I got, what I gained from that.
You did, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Madeiras, you could become, you could potentially be coming in to a lot of changes in administration since you've been here before. Some of those changes include staff members that you've had previous relationships with in different roles. How do you see those relationships potentially impact the job moving forward?
Yeah. So again, because I was superintendent, I think it'd be less of an issue in relation, especially, you spoke to administrators, you only speak to staff, I can speak there. But administration, four of my five principals are still here when I left, right? The only new principal is the middle school principal, right? We have, we have Mike, we have Bethany, you know, I'm calling my first name, we have Liz, but, so I'm, maybe some are here, I didn't see, but, so the principal interaction I had with, and I think I had a good relationship, my administrative assistant's still here, she may give you my thumbs down after I leave, I don't know, but I'm not going to put her on the spot and ask you that. So I don't think, I don't think those dynamics are that troublesome. I think you have three talented central office directors doing a phenomenal job, and then are probably stressed out big time. They can't say that, I can say that to you, what do I have to lose, other than you saying, we're moving in a different direction? They have to be extremely anxious, doing their jobs and this job every day. That's what you're asking them to do. I'm not saying intentionally, but it's happening. I'm watching a business manager who's been here, was my principal, outstanding guy, Georgetown guy, too, he's probably happy about that victory last week, but who's presenting the budget that I watched. I mean, I, I just, Terry and I had just a brief overlap, and certainly I know the steel through South Coast, right? I was the chairman of the board for South Coast Collaborative for 16 years, so my experience is there. So I, I don't think, Mr. Burke, to your point, I will say this, though, you don't need a disruptor or more drama. So everything I'm sharing with you tonight is not about disruption, it's not about drama, you don't need those things, you have enough of that. So, and I'm not suggesting, I'm pointing fingers at where it's coming from, but it's unintentional. I always still use this line, if any of my administrators are behind me have heard this before, you don't need a problem identifier, you need a problem solver. Got enough problems, right? I don't need someone to tell me what, what my problems are, I need someone to help me solve them. I think I'm that transitional person to help in that process, and I would feel very comfortable in my previous role with those individuals. But the folks that I, that are new on this board, though, likewise, and that, that are new administrators, like the middle school principal, I need to engage and get to know those folks. But interim people should not be disruptors. If you wanted a long-term disruptor, repost, go do that, would be my suggestion. Go do that. I don't think you have the time or the luxury and can afford to do that, though, my opinion. Hope I answered, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Rick, you did. Sylvia, go ahead.
Thanks. How are you?
Good, Mr. Sylvia.
We got to overlap for a few years.
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
And we share some commonalities with Somerset and Ethica College.
Absolutely.
I always enjoyed hearing how proud you were about your family, especially your boys, and to hear an update, that, that's great. My question-
Somehow, I don't know how I got that into the answer, but thank you.
Well, you said you were going to get everything in. So I'm giving, I'm going to give you a chance to do problem solving and everything.
Sure.
So my question to the, to the, to the candidate earlier was leadership style and then leaving, and if it changed your perspective, and, but Will sort of touched on that. So, given that you had one piece in the ear, listening to the buzzer presentation recently, you know, maybe you can give me some problem-solving ideas on first name, the percentage increase-
I'll give you a little glimpse, I'm not giving it all. I, this is my first rodeo here, folks, I, you know-
You're not getting a per diem check for this, but give me, be a problem solver.
So I think there's a significant gap. I know town officials, because I, the reason I know that they're not here tonight, because there's a Board of Selectmen meeting in both Freetown and Lakeville tonight, right? So that's why I was actually surprised, I apologize to Jose in advance, I didn't know if Lakeville would even be here to be able to do that, because I knew they had multiple board meetings and finance meetings. My take on your budget, on the district's budget, and then I have some strategies that I'm going to maybe hold back all the detail on, just until you sign me up, and then I'll fill you in on the rest of how we're going to get there, in a ridiculously short amount of time, by the way, folks, look at your timeframe in that budget. I see, I mean, I see a huge gap in the assessments of what the towns can afford and what you presented today. Huge. Would you like me to define huge? Steve does, he wants me to define it. I, I, I think it's, I think it's at least a million-dollar gap for the towns. Assessment, not budget. Based on what I've watched on their meetings, because I've watched their meetings, too, and what their revenue is, and what their income is, fire station, I mean, there's a lot happening, right, in Lakeville and Freetown? More housing potentially, you've got some other things happening in the community where I think it's going to even put more stress on the schools. So I, it's not a criticism of the budget presentation and kind of what's going through, I think it was well done. But I do think, and I haven't been privy to the conversations Jack maybe has with the, in the regional FinCom, that would be my ballpark guess of the assessment gap between both towns combined, and what they'll, what they'll come back to you with. So that means that the budget gap is obviously even higher than that. I am about as fiscally conservative as they come, right? There's, so those that don't know me, I am going to do what's best for students, I am going to do, put the necessary resources forward. I've always said in my budget presentations, the budget is nothing more than a reflection of your priorities. You guys have heard that nauseam, I've said that over and over again, but it's true. And sometimes it's even more true when you have limited resources, right? You really have to identify where you're going to spend that money, and you have negotiations, and you can't spend one-time money. Remember when I came on board, folks, going back, and go back to some history if you need to, maybe I should have done some slideshows to show you this, E and D, $80,000, right? Eighty was the number one year. Over $2 million right now? Take a look at it, when I left, what it was. Pretty good shape. It's not going to solve your, your, your problem, by the way. One-time funding on continuation just exacerbates the situation. The other piece, I guess I would say to the long-term piece, we were so worked up about getting our best business managers over the years, always thinking long-term, and what happened in almost all those instances? We lost them. Nobody's fault, but I'm just saying, before you make a final decision on who is the most qualified, experienced person to take over where we're at right now, think about that. It's not always necessarily what we're going to get in five or six years. Although I can also talk, no one said it yet, so if I, I know we have three more questions, I will speak to the two restrictions that retirees are up against if people have questions or are misinformed about that. Because I do have clarification on why I'm not only a short-term solution, but can be a long-term solution within the law and what the retirement board allows for. There are basically only two restrictions, time and the earnings, and I can address both of those at some point, it really doesn't tie into your question, Steve, in relation to that piece, though. But I mean, we've got to, I mean, we've got, and I say wait, roll up our sleeves on the budget piece, and the legal issue piece, too. We've got to close some of those doors, right? And we have to do it in a compassionate way, and we've got to get things resolved so we can bring back what I think. I, I don't think things have changed that dramatically. I just don't believe what I witnessed and experienced and saw, that there was enough focus on the task at hand, and as a result, it became much more personal than it needed to be. And then it was kind of lost, right? It almost doesn't matter. If I've insulted you, right, if I've insulted you tonight, well, I apologize in advance, come see me afterwards and tell me at least why I did it, so I can fix it the next time. But once I've done that, you're shutting me down, even if I have a good idea, right? You're starting to, or at least starting to shut the person down. And that's real important, it's what I saw with public participation, by the way. I saw the idea, and you tried to stay to the three minutes in the timeframe, but I saw people walking away, again, just on the camera, as feeling that they weren't, there wasn't follow-up. And I'm not suggesting there wasn't follow-up, that the business manager didn't follow-up, the director, superintendent didn't, didn't get back to them, because I wasn't privy to that after the fact. But when I watched those individuals, I just wanted, I jumped through a couple of times and simply say, Mr. Clark, I'm, I'm going to get back to you tomorrow on that, here's my cell phone. Here's my cell phone. I wanted to say that on camera there, because it not only would have told Mr. Clark, and I'm just using poor Bob as an example, but it would have not only told Mr. Clark that I was going to address it, it would have told the rest of the community, why are people lining up? They're not trusting. As transparent as you guys have been including this process, we've got to fix that, we've got to fix that. And it is fixable. I, I said all along, and I said early on, there isn't a lot that's dramatically different from my perspective, other than focused task, professional, on what's best for kids. I don't, I wouldn't be here tonight if I thought anybody on this board, by the way, didn't want what was best for kids in the district. Right? I, I don't, I don't believe that. Because I know what you get paid to do, so you're either the worst financial advisors ever, if you're doing it for that reason, right? That's kind of what Mrs. Madeiras is suggesting on my part. Why just, Westport's, you got a pretty good gig, you're a daily sub, six-minute ride. I was coming back to the school, coming back from the school at the time. Sylvia, I hope I answered, I didn't give you enough insight.
Yeah, I have all the answers, you solved all the problems.
No, I mean, it's, it's huge, though, I mean, it's a big issue. I, I just, I didn't, I haven't seen it, and I know you have a board meeting Wednesday, and I know you're starting the process, and you've got regional FinCom coming up, and, and then you've got a hearing in a few weeks. And I, but, and I'm not privy to negotiations and those types of things. But based on what I've watched in some of the town meeting relations with finance and Board of Selectmen, I'm concerned about how huge the gap is and how you can fix that. Because it, does it involve staff? When you get, when you look at a school budget and it's that large, and who can do that that has no experience? Oh, you hire someone that does have experience.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Hi, thanks.
So, Mr. Sylvia took my question about the budget, but, so you'll have to humor me-
I threw them all off tonight by saying that they weren't going, they weren't going to follow, Jen says she's going to follow the rules, and I kind of-
I have a flashback to the meetings that you ran.
I hope that's somewhat of a good thing.
It might be a couple.
All right. Somewhere in there, I'll take, I'm going to take it as an anyway, even if it's not.
So your, your time here in the district predates my time on the school committee, and also my children's time as students here, so you'll have to humor me if this-
No, and I, I feel bad, I apologize, I know Carolina, you have to end work in Courtney as well. Krista, we did a different role, so.
We did.
Can you tell me what your vision is then for developing the budget? We're in the midst of the budget season.
Yep.
And how you measure whether our limited resources are actually resulting in student success?
So based, and I'm looking at this from the outside, but certainly having 18 years of experience doing this as a superintendent, ten years of, the process seems right on track, what, you know, what Mr. Higgins engaged, of course, he inherited some pretty ugly circumstances, right? We don't, I'm moving forward, so he had to kind of fix some things to get to where you're at. But I, so I don't think the process is, I, I guess I, I don't feel comfortable, I know enough to feel that the towns have been engaged enough in the process. And that's not a criticism, it's just my observation on the outside. I'm not privy to conversations the business manager has, is having with the two town administrators, for example, with, you know, Board of Selectmen and Finance. But when I watch their meetings and they're making comments about it, they're raising concerns, it concerns me. So that's the piece that I think, that bringing instant credibility down, regional school districts, and I was a superintendent in two regional school districts, truly believe that, no, they're autonomous and there are some rules to that. The reality is, if you don't have the two town supports, you're done. You're done. Right, you can fight them, you can bring the kids in and bring the parents, I don't think we ever, for the school committee that was here, had circumstances, though, that we were trying to put more people in the seats. We tried to convince them early on in the process. So according to your, to your question, I think the process that's been put together, the incorporation, I keep pointing to Mr. Higgins, who isn't, isn't another individual there, but who's kind of orchestrated, making sure that all the building principals were part of the process, and as a result, staff are part of the process, and the regional FinCom. I think all of that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disrupt that or change that, but I'd want to know upfront, if they don't, if, if someone here doesn't already know, I'd want to know what the bottom-line assessment number is from Laketown and Free, Lakeville and Freetown. I'd already know that if I were the interim superintendent. Maybe you already know that, I'm not asking you on public spot, I'd want to know what their number was. And then I necessarily, for those folks that are on the Board of Selectmen that think I'm fiscally conservative, typically, no, I don't really like their number, but I'm going to fight for what I think is right for our kids. But it's important to know that, right? If we've got a million-dollar gap, and I'm talking about adding some fringe programs, I may have to revisit that, say, okay, so kind of what, what can we do? That's why I keep saying that three- to six-month gap, that, that period is much more crucial than I think, than I think the three- to six-year gap piece. So from a budget perspective, it would be taking a look at that and getting more detail. I mean, that would be part of my conversation with central office directors and the principals and kind of go. The principals, if there, if there are any principals that are here, I don't want to keep turning around my back, that are here, they'll know, I, I'm not the easiest guy to negotiate with. It's just the truth, right? There are instances that there was no negotiation. I think you're close to a no-negotiation conversation, folks, based on your numbers right now. You may not like to hear that. I have never, Steve kind of alluded to it, I think he was trying to give me somewhat of a compliment, but sometimes I said things, sitting in that chair, that made people a little uncomfortable, but were truthful and transparent. That's what you need now. But you need it to be done professionally, and not personally, and everybody's got to be on board with it. I will never do anything in that seat that's going to surprise any one of you folks. You will never have a surprise from me. But the deal's going to come back, I'm kind of already alluding to where I'm going with this, I don't want any surprises either. Right, I, I think everybody respects and trusts that. So I think that part of it has to get worked out, and you don't have a lot of time to do that. You're up against town meetings, right? You have laws and requirements when you have to present your budget, vote your budget, and I've seen the timeframe, but that's not a lot. That's not a lot. When I thought I might be starting this position even earlier, when I said to Mrs. Madeiras, it was a Sunday, and I used to make the joke, I'll see you on Friday for pizza. And she kind of nodded, and lovingly kind of thought that was not as funny as I thought it, because it was the truth, right? Budget season, you're going to FinCom, you're going to regional FinCom, sometimes you're going to Board of Selectmen meetings, uninvited, to talk about what it is you are trying to, to sell to them in relation to why it's so important that the school budget is in place. What are we talking about, a $49 million budget? That's the number, right, that we're looking at right now? The budget number, not the assessment number? Wow. We're talking circumstances that I, if it were my money, I'd certainly want someone experienced as a leader helping me get there. I, Courtney, I can be more specific if you want, I hope I answered it, okay?
Yeah, I got, thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Madeiras, how are you?
We go way back, and she could tell stories that are probably complimentary, Mr. Sylvia, but, right?
I wasn't going to say that, actually, I was going to give you a compliment, because one of our favorite memories of our son, you were actually in the background at a Halloween party at the school, so yes.
I do remember that, too.
Yes, so that you can know that you used to go out to all of the events and everything. I will say that, I appreciate that.
I appreciate that, hearing that, thank you, Sharon.
What is your availability? You know, we have a budget, as you know, next month, it's, we're against the clock, as you said, so what would be your availability?
So I made a lot of tongue-in-cheek comments, just to kind of make it, keep it a little bit light. I wasn't too far off coming to work tomorrow. I know you have a school board meeting, you're not making a decision tonight, so I wasn't trying to push the envelope, maybe I was. My availability is, I committed to, on a day-to-day basis, to Tom Albin and Mike Granfield. If, if a decision was made and you were looking to hire someone, and I wanted to fulfill that commitment for, let's say, next week, and the week after, Mike's coming back, it was supposed to be a three-week period, two-week period, I would either do one of two things. I'd either try to finish the week and come in here in the afternoon, beginning at 2:00, that's when the day ends, and come here for the afternoon and evening, which would take care of a lot of meetings and things like that, it wouldn't be as helpful, probably be helping some of you folks if I had to meet with you, though, right, after hours and things. So the quick answer is, when do you need me to work? That's, and I'm- and I'm being serious about that. There is not a 30-day window, 60-day window, 90-day window, that's just not peace. I've committed to Westport on a per diem basis through this week, next week, and then Mike was planning to return. But I think even that's negotiable. They knew I was coming here tonight.
So you would be available if we needed to talk to you, if we wanted something to do with the budget, or?
Absolutely. Yeah. And John and Will can attest this. My first comment wasn't, because I didn't know what you were looking for. If you go back to that text, I believe I said, "I'll offer my guidance, my support, or my leadership." And I left it that way because I didn't, at the time, and I'm not sure you folks did, because you hadn't had a chance to meet, right? You just had a mid-year resignation. Pretty significant that the leader of the district. So, I mean, it wasn't as if you, and so I understood when, I didn't expect them both to respond. They hadn't had a chance to talk to you folks. So, Crystal, to your point, I would make myself available. I did earlier say, "I'm about ethics and moral and professional." I'd hate to say to Westport, "Yeah, you don't have somebody in there tomorrow." And that's where I thought I could kind of navigate that and work that. But I don't know if you're that pressed on that timeframe. I'm concerned when I, when I think, though, that there are other people picking up that task on a day-to-day basis. So it would be, I mean, I don't think you've identified a date. You probably haven't had that discussion. But I'd be open to a pretty quick turnaround.
Okay.
And in most instances, I would say to you folks, nobody can do that unless you ran the district for eight years and know the players. Most of them. I know there's been some new individuals coming in. It was a challenge. I have to be honest with you folks. I took, I shared this with Mrs. Madeiras, did two things. This is tape, so I'll make sure she doesn't watch the tape. But we were walking, and she said to me, 34 years, sadly my two books, she said, "So let me get this right. You're interviewing for your job," as she called it, "my job." And I said, "Yeah. Can I ask why?" Because, I mean, they hired me in Westport in day, one day, just from my experience. And I said, "Because they're going through a process." And I didn't go into all the details, because as much as a loving spouse likes to hear it, she didn't want to hear all the details. But I wanted to say, there's been a lot happening. I respected the board. And I say this tonight, and I'll say it to the community. The process and the transparency that you've tried to provide through this process should not leave anyone believing that there's been some deals. Got it? Right? That's from my perspective. Nobody should be saying, after everything you've done, that there's been some sidebar piece based on this, because why would you have done that? You could have just gone ahead. I said to, and I said to Will and certainly to John, I mean, to hire an interim doesn't require a poster. School committee can simply just appoint. But I think under the circumstances, you were being very guarded and careful about how the community would perceive that. And not knowing who those, you know, who was even available at the time. Crystal, I hope I answered that.
You did. Thank you.
Ready? I'm ready. What time is it right now? 7:30, 8:00? Let's go down. Renee, give me the code. Let's get started. The directors are sitting here saying, "Really? Come on." I'm kidding. But, but there are not many people, in my opinion, that know what needs to get done here, and that can do that quickly and turn around. It's just the reality of the facts. It's not a criticism.
Good to know.
How are you? Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. I asked two questions to Ms. Barbara, and I'm just going to stay with the same questions.
Sure.
Although your experience is significant and standard, and you, it's like you are in your, like a fish in your water, coming back here. So, but I want to stick to this question.
The shallow pool, too.
So the first question that I asked to Ms. Barbara was, are you, what are your thought on sexually transitioning children to sex change?
What are my personal thoughts?
Your thought as a superintendent?
Yeah. I mean, so I kind of intentionally answered it that way, right? It's irrelevant what my personal thoughts are in relation to this. I'm going to make a decision on what I think is best for the school district, from a superintendent's perspective and from the district. I certainly respect every individual and every student. But I also think what we've been missing, making sure that families are engaged in the community, are engaged in the process. I think that has been a grossly overlooked piece in this whole process. I respect students' rights. I'll certainly follow and abide by the law and whatever, you know, statutory requirements are in place. I'm not going to compromise the community and the district relative to making a decision. But at the same token, I want to be sure that all the constituents are involved in the process, whatever that determination may be.
So you do believe in parents' right?
Yeah. And there's no doubt I believe in parents' rights. Those people that worked with me for eight years know here. You know, that's, you're getting my cellphone. Everybody here is getting my cellphone, but so is the community. Right? That's, I mean, that's my deal. 508-243-0362, number hasn't changed. I still have you guys on speed dial. I give that number. I used to say to people, and they'd say, school board members would say lots, I used to kind of do that, I appreciate that. I'd say, you know what? The good news is I'm giving you my cellphone. The bad news, I give, like, everybody my cellphone, so it's not like it's bad. But it was important. It was important that parents were involved in the process, but at the same time respecting students. And I'm not saying there's anything easy. It's the question you asked, right? But I am saying that I am supportive of making sure that people are aware of the circumstances, are involved in the process. And it's something that I can show evidence of examples while I was here, that I demonstrated that. Sometimes parents and community members not liking the answer, but at least keeping them informed.
Thank you.
Anyone at the table have additional questions for Mr. Madeiras?
Yeah, my second question is, how do you involve parents and community members in your decision-making process?
Yeah. So I know the standard lines would be that, you know, I'm a consensus builder and do that, and I do believe in consensus. I used to, but I did say this, and some of my administrators here know, if I don't want your opinion, I'm going to let you know that, right? If we're in a committee and I want you to be part of that process, then you're on a committee, and I want your opinion. But sometimes you have to make some decisions and determinations unilaterally, based on what's best for the district. So in the timeframe of an interim, I don't know how much consensus building we're going to have on some of the topics that we're going to hit upon relative to legal issues, financial issues, board issues. When I say consensus, obviously consensus within the board, but other individuals. So, I mean, you have, you have multiple groups of school councils and so forth, and PTOs. I don't think anybody who, they have short memory, thinks that I excluded any of those groups. I was a superintendent who would go to those meetings and hear what the PTO had to say in relation to what was happening. CPAC, I mean, we can go down the lists in those groups. So I am very much engaged in that process. I guess, but I wanted to be clear, based on the timeframe that you're up against, some decisions this board's going to have to make, we're going to have to articulate it clearly to the community in a short time, and maybe get some pushback on folks saying, "Well, why won't we include in that process?" Just on, because where we're at, right? I mean, we've got three, four months to finish the school year. I'll go back to my initial comments on that. You have four months to successfully finish this school year, transition through this school year, then take the summer and get ready for the fall. That's where I think the focus should be, and I think you can include people in the process. But I think you have to use your organizational structures that you have in place. You have a lot of subcommittees and so forth. I mean, in watching for the last two and a half years, folks frustrating at times, and I know it's frustrating for some of you folks. It was, painful is the word I use. I think most of you would agree with that word, if you could privately. You don't have to give it, give me your answer. It was painful to watch, and it's not a criticism, because I knew how agonizing it was in relation to that piece. And so I think it's so important that you trust, that you have confidence, that it is a collective piece, whoever you choose to bring in. I'm walking out of here feeling really good that I pretty much laid it on what, and for some of you that haven't seen me for some time, I think I maybe have brought a little bit more passion, and some of you kind of wondering, does the retired guy still have that passion and emotion in him? It's here. It's here, and it's vested in what's best for kids. But what, what candidate isn't going to say that? What candidate who doesn't have any superintendent's experience isn't going to come in and tell you that they can do the job? Sure they can. I'm just saying to you folks, consider, is this the time to do that? Is this the time to do that as a board? And if you, at the end of the day, feel that that's the case, I'll respect that. I just read out my number again. Some of you have, hopefully still have the number, I haven't deleted it. I'll give it to the new board members, so we can kind of go with it. But it's going to be an action-packed, roll-up-the-sleeves scenario. I wasn't joking when I talked about, like, a Saturday morning, I'll bring coffee and we can kind of meet, or we can do this over the phone, or kind of meet. Because I think, I would think you folks would each want to meet with me individually, or we can do it in pairs. I know we have to kind of play the rules. But I just think I'd want to offer everybody the opportunity, especially some of the newer members who haven't had a chance to work with me. But even for the members who have, you know, it's been some time. I don't think the problems, I don't think it is so broken that it's not fixable. It is absolutely the case. Let's be honest. What's the strength of the district? The students and the staff. That hasn't changed. I think you'd all agree, right? That hasn't changed. I don't think the towns are that dramatically different. And you guys definitely will agree, and I'll probably blow this with my answer, but I'm not so sure the composition of the board is that dramatically different. And for those folks that have been here a while, when you're driving home tonight, some of you are sure to ride than others, think about some of the characters I'm talking about. And don't, and if you can honestly say that they didn't have their own opinion, and it was a strong opinion on topics, let me know. They did. But it was professional. And that's the focus, and that's why you can bring that together. Right? I mean, Mr. Sylvia referenced my experience here. He sat and commended me one night on a, it was during the pandemic, because it was a pretty ugly meeting. Former board members were behind me, very upset that we weren't bringing the kids back, if you recall, fast enough. And we hit the questions head-on. Not always the best answers, that, or the answers they wanted to hear. But it was done with compassion, with an understanding that we have a plan, trust us. We're going to get that back in a short time. Trust me. I do believe that. And for some of you that have been painfully sitting here for these past few months, you're saying, "Short time, Rick?" Well, maybe we get to define "short." I just think that you're up against it in relation to that. I can speak to, I know it wasn't, I hope that answered the question. Mr. Burke, Mr. Segways, I don't know if I have a closing, but I just wanted to reference, because I know for discussion purposes for you, maybe it's not, maybe it would only be the case if I were the candidate, I just wanted to speak to, as a retired employee, the time restriction, earning piece in relation.
Please.
So, being in my third year, each year that you retire, it expands your wage opportunity. So basically, you can make, you can make in a given calendar year, what your pension is, the difference between your pension and what you would be making now in that current position. So let's say that's, think about what I was making, $200,000, let's say. That gap plus $15,000 per year. So I'm up to almost $45,000 in a calendar. So it's a triple-digit wage piece. So the wages, I guess my point is, the wage on both parties is not an issue for an interim position. Because then it, that's an annual. The time restriction is 1,200 hours in a calendar year. So you go December 31st, you start zero again. You can put, you can work for 1,200 hours. So just if you do the quick math on 1,200 hours, including the summer months, that's about eight months. Again, interim basis. You can just renegotiate another contract. That should not be the deciding factor, from my perspective, on me not being a viable choice. If you're concerned about the fact that just having someone for three to six months doesn't work if that person's not able to stay on longer, I just wanted to point that out. That's certainly something that is possible within the restrictions. Those are the only two restrictions. And then the last piece, I'll just throw this out, which is easy enough to do, I would draft it up, is the chairman of the board, school board can ask the DESI to waive it. Right? And then there are no restrictions. And I can tell you, there are multiple examples of a superintendent resigning mid-year, or leaving, and DESI approving the waiver, which would put no restrictions. I just kind of share with you, I don't think the restrictions are an issue in relation to an interim position. But even more long-term, I think they would be open to that, especially where you have some legal issues, some financial issues, and you're bringing back potentially the former superintendent in that role. So I just want to leave that as food for thought in relation to kind of where we're at.
Thank you.
So at the very beginning, Mr. Burke, I promised you, you were thankful that I didn't have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd be short, but you didn't know, I was just going to fill it up with time and answering the questions. But I'd be happy to, if there's any follow-up. I know Mr. Clark may mention, is there anybody else who has? I'd be happy to respond. I know it's getting late for you folks.
I'll follow up, because I said I was going to. I know we've had some frank discussions in your office when you were here, and you indicated to me that you were considering going to Rhode Island.
Yeah.
I was just curious how that, how that went.
Yeah. So I haven't applied for any, any full-time superintendent positions. I haven't seen an interim position, which I would have considered somewhere else, I'll be honest. And the reason I didn't apply to any full-time, because I would have had to sell, and I use Smithfield, just pick a town, I grew up in Middletown, Rhode Island. Pick a community that has a superintendent. The superintendent comes in and says, "You got me for life." Right? "I'm going to stay forever." Then signs on for three years, takes the money and their pension, and then leaves. I couldn't do that in good conscience. And so as a result, if I wasn't going to be that committed to the community, I didn't apply. So to date, and that could change. I saw this as a unique opportunity, as I'm sure Dr. Starkey did too, you know, quite candidly. Everything I've shared with you tonight, I'm going to be completely truthful. If in any way it appeared at all, I didn't reference her name up until this point in this conversation, the utmost respect for, as I do, everybody here tonight, and the process. I just, I just think, considering this is a significant transitional decision that needs to be made, I think I check a lot of those boxes off in relation to that. And that's where, when I said early on and maybe took you back, that I don't think this is close. I don't think it's close when you put all those things into consideration. But then you've got to put up with this personnel in that seat.
Yes.
So. That wasn't the greatest close for me, right? I didn't close that real strong, but that was my, that was the honest piece. I did want to piece, pick that out, because when I did have the very, and it was limited, Will can attest to this, I hadn't spoken to any other board members, there was kind of the question relative to retirement, right? Because I think that, at one point, they had waived all the restrictions. They brought them back after COVID. So it would require a waiver to eliminate those. But with an interim process, you wouldn't do. I don't, I think you have, you might have a couple of board positions. I didn't even reference that, right? Put someone in a six-month contract, or on a per diem basis for six months, revisit it in three months, both sides. You might have a couple of new board members potentially. Let them be part of the process, right? Which is kind of the end of the school year. Those individuals come on board and feel part of the process. Maybe it doesn't work. But Dr. Robert Kraft.
Oh, my God.
I'm a Giants guy. That's why I can say that a little bit. But they did the right thing, ultimately. So, thank you for the opportunity. I really, again, I like to talk a lot of personal tales and professional tales with a lot of you. I've had some, I've had a great experience. I don't, I can leave, I left after eight years, and I think, I say this, I don't have a negative thing to say about how I was treated in my experience here. I think that's kind of why I feel I can fit that piece. I really, I'm not saying I haven't burned some bridges and that, some parents weren't happy with some things I did and so forth. But I think at the end of the day, they knew that I was doing, or at least I thought I was doing what was best for our kids.
Rick, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Thanks, Miss Segways.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a quick recess.
Yep.
Yes, I'll ask if we can take a five-minute recess? All right, everyone, we're back from recess.
All right, everyone, we're back from recess. We had the privilege of talking to two candidates tonight for our position. Both with different backgrounds, different levels of experience. I'd love to hear the thoughts from the table. Anybody can start.
I guess I could start. This is frankly, one of the best problems we've had in a while. We have two candidates that certainly have great proven leadership skills, some legacy knowledge in the district, and clearly want to come back to the district, which I think is great. I do want to add some perspective from the search committee, and just give a public thank you to that group. We had about 12 members, made up of teachers, district administrators, principals, school committee members, and parents, that did a great job in a thorough vetting of about 12 candidates. They were comprised of, and Mr. Maderas is, I have a lot of respect for him, but I, in some ways, disagree with his definition of the interim position. We had a nice balance of sitting people with current jobs versus retirees in that role, which led to some good-spirited, thoughtful conversation about moving names forward. We forwarded three names. One of the candidates withdrew. We did not release that person's name, but that person was a sitting superintendent, highly qualified. Obviously Barbara is a sitting assistant superintendent, and then Mr. Maderas. So it was a good conversation. I would be remiss, though, if I didn't share the sentiment of the full committee and some of the other school committee members that sat with me on that panel. The sentiment was pretty strong, that they looked at the candidates, which sort of through the lens of, one candidate in particular provided a short-term option. And then the preference of the search committee, and there was consensus on this, the potential for a longer-term solution through the interim role. And that was the recommendation of the person that withdrew and Dr. Starkey, which was unanimous. So I just wanted to, A, publicly say thank you to the search committee participants, but also share on the consensus or the sentiment of that group, that they were looking to use the interim position as more of a potential long-term solution for the district, because they felt as though it would provide stability, consistency, not only working through the budget process this year, but over a period of time. And personally, as a facilitator in that meeting, I didn't really give my position, but I certainly agree with that position. So that's my public thank you to the search committee. Thoughts on that?
If I may quickly, Steve, you did a great job facilitating that committee.
Oh, thank you.
You're very welcome.
It was a great group.
It really was a great group, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
And I do agree, the consensus was that. Where most, everybody was looking for more of a long-term solution versus a short-term solution.
But it's a good problem to have.
It is a great problem, and we have great candidates.
Proven leaders that, they're Lakers, that want to come back.
Yep. I think that says a lot for our district, for our faculty, the fact that two people that have been here and do have a history here want to come back here.
Yeah, through the chair, obviously, it's unfortunate that we're in the position, right? But as you said, Steve, we're blessed to have two kind of former Lakers wanting to come back and kind of step up, for sure. I think they bring two unique skill sets, right? It's undeniable, the work that Rick put in here over an eight-year period, and Rick came in during a period where this district needed consistency, and he certainly provided that. And I think Barbara, too, I mean, just listening to her speak, I mean, she's Freetown-Lakeville to the bones, right? And you could hear the passion in her voice, and it says a lot about a person that's willing to walk away from a full-time role to accept an interim role in the district that she knows and loves, for sure. Especially willing to put her neck on the line and throw a performance requirement in there, too. I was, I was kind of, my head kind of tilted back when she said she was willing to put in a performance piece to really try to extend the contract and stay longer. So yeah, I mean, we have definitely a difficult conversation. I certainly think Dr. Starkey is, I think she could absolutely leave the district. I think she absolutely wants to be here. I think she considers this home. And I think her leaving and going to Bourne and being in central office and being the assistant superintendent and having to step up when, in certain times, certainly helped prepare her to come back and be an even better leader than she was previously, very similar to her leaving to go be a middle school principal to come back here and lead again. So ultimately, I think we're in a good spot here. It's going to be a tough decision, for sure.
I agree with the sentiments. I like a lot of what, of what Mr. Maderas could bring to the district, you know, this week. But I like the experience Dr. Starkey brings. You know, I like being able to follow her career and seeing, you know, the times when she did leave the district was just to advance her career with opportunities that weren't present here at the time. You know, but then return to this district, and we were able to benefit from those additional opportunities. You know, I can see her as a face to lead this district over the next handful of years.
I agree.
Anybody else?
I'll say I was on the search committee, and thank you, Steve, you did do a great job facilitating that. And, you know, one of the comments that I heard from staff was about having so much changeover and bringing an interim in for three months or six months, and then, you know, six months from now, we find someone else and someone else comes in. They were concerned about the turnover and how we would be able to develop a long-term or longerish-term vision if we were constantly searching, and we were constantly, if we had to post the job again. And that was from a staff member, which, you know, I kind of agree with.
Well, I was on the search committee as well. I like Barbara. I liked what she had to say. But Mr. Maderas. I want consistency. I want somebody who could start yesterday. I feel that he could bring that, and I feel like he could get us back to where we were. And then we could open it up to a permanent position. And with that permanent position, we could open it up to a lot more people. Because I think a lot of people didn't apply for this job because it was listed as interim. So I think we would have a much bigger audience and more candidates to look for. I am really apprehensive about hiring someone who does not have superintendent experience again. And that's just the way I feel. And I just think someone with experience, he would bring stabilization. He would bring, I think, a fractured relationship with the town back. And I think that right now, that that's very, very important. You know, this budget is huge. There is going to be going, a lot of back and forth about this. And that's another thing, I don't want a new superintendent to be caught in the middle of this again. And I think that's what would happen. I think there would be drama over this, and I think it could possibly get ugly. And I also, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it would be fair to Dr. Starkey if that were to happen. So that's why I believe that if Mr. Maderas came back, could get us on the right road, then if she wanted to come in and apply for the permanent position and be handed off a soft handoff, like our former superintendent was, where everything is done, everybody has their ducks in a row, I think that would be beneficial, because I certainly do not want to see another person dragged through the mud. Because I feel that it's going to get ugly because of the budget, teacher negotiations, and I just don't feel that it would do us any good to put more drama on someone who certainly doesn't need it.
I think I appreciate Mrs. Barbara's background and her expertise in some areas. However, Mr. Maderas, he have the know-how of this district. And I think he could definitely bring us back and help us with, with the budget, with transparency, with, I think, so many broken relationships, if you want to call it that way, or bridges in a lot of issues that we are facing. I think his energy, his enthusiasm, his experience, the experience that he have in the district, he wasn't here for one or two years, he was here for eight years. So I think that is very significant. And, you know, when he leave, he left the budget, I mean, the district in a good shape, and I think he's more than capable to do that again.
Bob, go ahead. It's a real difficult decision for me, because I've known them both now. I've known Barbara for years, and I've become friends with Rick. And you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. The fact that she's got a four-year extension to her contract and still is looking to come here, I think speaks to her loyalty and love of the district. Rick's a great guy, and he do a great job. But I'm trying to look at the, for the good of the district, and the district needs stability. It doesn't need musical superintendents like we've had in the past. With that said, I would make a motion to appoint Barbara Starkey as interim superintendent, with the opportunity to extend.
Second. Further discussion?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's discuss.
Again, I can't stress enough that this is a good problem to have. And I think there's good points on all sides of this. I mean, if it weren't for the one-word interim in that application, we'd probably be sitting here with Barbara Starkey. And Mr. Maderas probably wouldn't have applied for that. I do think we can use the interim to our advantage, especially with the evaluative process. It would be a good thing to do it that way. But I also noticed on this, and Crystal, we just had a side conversation about going paperless and potentially having technology, and if this was the ability to touch, I noticed Mr. Maderas recommended Dr. Starkey. And I don't know, in my time on the committee, we've had an open seat where the two applicants, and one recommended the other. So I can't read it, because I can't download a piece of paper, but I think it's neat that Rick has certainly endorsed her candidacy. I don't know if it was specifically for this job, but it's noted on.
Yeah, he was a reference for her, personally.
Yeah, he's a reference. So I think we're in good hands either way, but, you know, I've learned over time, listen to the school community, listen to the teachers, listen to the staff, and they want stability, and I think they want the potential for a long-term solution. And with that, I would say Dr. Starkey is the answer. So she certainly has my support, as does Rick, but I think at this point in time, it would be Dr. Starkey for me.
Bob, go ahead.
As to speak to the availability of superintendent's candidates, over the years, as people who've been on the committee know for a long time, the pool is a puddle now. And a lot of applicants you get because they've been fired from, or dismissed from their other position. Or you get first-time superintendents with no experience at all. Barbara's been an assistant superintendent. All of that superintendent's stuff filters down to the assistant through time. It's not easy to go out and find a person who has ties to a district, loyalty to a district, and is willing to give up a four-year contract to come here. Those kind of applicants are extremely rare. And I think she'd make a good fit for the district. I think she'd be welcomed by the faculty and staff. And I think she'd do a good job. She's a worker out. He got a master's degree and a doctorate while working. What does that tell you? I think she's a good choice. Rick's a great choice, too. But I'm trying to think long-range for the district.
On my end, I would agree with those sentiments exactly. Barbara is someone that I can see, three to five years from now, being in that seat, doing an excellent job. On the very short term, I like what Rick brings to the table, getting us through it to April. I want the long-term solution for the district. It would be my vote.
Potential for the long term.
But, yeah. Crystal, I can appreciate you being very straightforward and asking both candidates, you know, what their availability was. And, you know, we learned some good information from them, from both of them. Anything else, anybody? We have a motion and a second on the table.
Sorry, I just have one question. Are we going to have to pay for her to go through the superintendent induction? Or did she already do that as an assistant superintendent? It just kind of came into my head. You can? Okay.
They do have to do an induction as an assistant, and it's the same as a superintendent's induction.
Okay, so everything's all set.
She should have completed her.
All right, good.
Mentor, but I wouldn't say that that would negate a responsibility to support her.
Sure. Well, maybe we could get Rick to do that.
Thank you, Terri.
There we go. There we go, problem solved. Problem solved, maybe we could get Rick to mentor.
Yeah, it would be great to be unified on this, but that's a great suggestion.
Any additional discussion to come forward?
No, I just, I agree with all the sentiments that were shared, and, you know, I'd like to look forward and, you know, move forward. And I think that Dr. Starkey gives us the best opportunity for that.
All right. I would ask for a roll-call vote for consensus with the school committee to be able to go into negotiations with Dr. Barbara Starkey for the position of interim superintendent. Yes.
Will Segway?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
I just have one question, sorry. Who is that negotiations from, done with the chair and the vice, how does that work, negotiations?
It's typically the chair.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
Jim Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Breckman?
Yes.
Crystal Ling?
Yes.
Carolyn Hernandez?
Eye of Spain.
Okay. Motion passes. I thank everybody for this. This was a tough decision, a good problem to have.
No, thank you. And again, thank you to the search committee.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And Renee, obviously, for all the coordination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold on, favor? Close. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.